Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, thank you, Jack. We are back on, I believe. We are in the auditorium tonight, which looks a little different for you folks at home. The only person that can see that screen is our superintendent. We are in the auditorium because an email got sent through that sounded like we needed to have a bigger venue, and so we did that upon request. Looks like we could have stuffed everybody in the other room, but that's okay. This is a nice room. So here we are. Adjustments to the agenda. June, did you have one?
Um, I did. I wanted to, under New... I wanted to have the two members each a vote from the board to approve one of them.
So we're gonna add 7E unfinished business. And it is going to be to listen to the Athens reps. We have two folks here from Athens that are interested in being part of our board, and there's one seat open. And after that, there will be action taken.
Molly, under unfinished business?
Unfinished, oh. I'm sorry. Let's put it under 8D. That's where it should go. Can everyone at the tables make sure their mics are off so we don't hear any feedback?
Oh, some dancing.
Okay, somebody else? Thank you. I want to make sure it wasn't us. Any other adjustments to the agenda? I see none. Let's move to review and approve Board minutes for April 11th. And I believe we have Board minutes that need to be approved for March 28th also. You and I gave you mine. We have minutes for March 28th. They had, we tried to approve those at the last meeting, and there were quite a few adjustments to be made. So we asked for those to be approved tonight after the adjustments were made. And we have minutes for April 11th.
Molly, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Board minutes for March 28th and April 11th.
As written?
As written.
Anyone have any discussion on that? There is a motion on the table to approve the Board minutes for March 28th as written and April 11th as written. Andy, can you tell me who's on Zoom?
Uh, you have Jack Ryer.
Who's not a member.
Pamela.
Yep.
Brenda Farkas. Uh, Deb Wright. And that looks like it. And Brenda has her hand.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Okay, so I just have one question. If we could make one comment on the March 28th, unless they've already been amended, that Deb had put a point of order in about tour, and Principal Brody answered that as far as what was the current enrollment in reference to the student petition. And I just wanted to know if that was reflected in the notes. Because it was, it was relevant to, to the conversation. So I guess it would be called a correction if it wasn't there.
Can you tell me where that is, please?
Um, on my, I can't. I think it was towards the end, right before... The point of order was missing, is what I'm saying.
I had asked Mr. Brody for the student count, and he had to look it up. So we went on to discuss other things. And then Deb brought the point of order, so that...
Yeah, it was kind of like in the middle, like right before.
Nope. Okay, sorry, but I need to see where it is so we can get it in the right spot.
It was on the back of the first page, but that might have been the way I copied it out.
Don't see where Deb did a point of order.
No, that's what I'm saying. It wasn't in the notes. It actually happened, but it wasn't in the notes.
So, Margot, my suggestion is we pull March 28th until we get this corrected and approve April 11th, if everyone is okay with bells. Okay, I see nobody saying no, so let's go to a motion on the floor to approve April 11th's minutes. And do a roll call for the people that are on Zoom.
Molly, point of order. You don't need too long. You need to do is say the minutes are accepted as corrected, or the minutes are accepted. The chair has that right.
Well, I think people on Zoom like to participate. That was all I... Pamela?
Yes, approve.
Brenda?
Yes.
And...
Aye. Thank you.
And everyone here is good with the minutes being approved? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Communication and public comments. Does it point to Jenny?
I don't see any online.
I've got one thing, Cole Streeter. I know we talked about the science program at the last meeting, and I'd like to know if we're doing anything for the industrial arts program as well. I spoke to the principal a little in the meeting we had here for another matter. And we have a lot of children that are not going to go on to college that are going to get into the trades, and I want to make sure that we're keeping up, whether it's carpentry, electrical plumbing, driving truck. And are we doing the things that we should be? I know everything doesn't happen, and have to happen here, and happen at other schools, vocational programs, et cetera, but it'd be nice to see if we're keeping up in those areas as well as the academic areas, so our children can go on and have a plan for the future and move on.
Thank you, Cole.
Jack Ryer has his hand up online.
Jack Ryer?
Hi there. A number of Board chairs recently got finished with a, with a session at the Vermont School Board Association, Vermont Superintendent's Association, and one of the subjects was community engagement. And one of the best practices identified in those discussions was a community engagement committee. I would just simply like to suggest to my colleagues at the high school board that this might be something they would like to consider restarting. We had one for many years. It worked, in my view, quite well, and it might be a good way for people to, to talk about subjects that might be of passionate concern to members in a more informal or relaxed setting, where conversation over a cup of coffee can work better than pointed fingers in a large auditorium. So I'm just passing that along as a suggestion. It's one I like, and that's all I got for you tonight.
Anyone else on our happy screen?
I do not see anyone.
So I'm gonna ask Mr. Brody to speak of that and a little more Deb poll, but you're absolutely right, and there is a program started. Mike Stack from Sacramento is really trying to promote this, and it's something that we've been weak on as far as I'm concerned for a long time. I'm in a, very involved in a trade. Terry's very involved in, Jason Terry's very involved in a trade, where we need to help get our children so that they understand that there's a real future here in, in a lot of businesses and a lot of hands-on stuff that a lot of our kids are really good at. So, John, maybe your principal's report, you can just kind of add that in. I know you know more about the legalities than I do.
Yeah.
Not putting you on the spot.
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have a request online. If we could reintroduce who's running the meeting, because we started on mute.
I am Molly Bannick, and I am the Chair of the Bellas Falls Union High School School Board. Anything else?
That is it.
David Clark, I represent Westminster on the Union High School Board.
John?
Oh, John Brody, principal. Andy Ha, superintendent. Jason Terry.
June Streeter. Bellas Falls Union High School.
Priscilla Lambert, I'm representing Rockingham.
And I'm Margot Vien, and I also represent Rockingham.
I'd like to make a roll call for people on Zoom. Pamela?
I'm Pamela Johnson-Surlock, and I represent the people of Grafton, Vermont.
Brenda?
Brenda Farkas, representing Rockingham.
Deb?
Deborah Wright, rec, excuse me, representing Rockingham on the Bellas Falls High School Board.
Thank you. Is there any more community comments on your screen?
I have none.
Thank you, Andy. I would like to move to the superintendent's report.
So with school vacation, it's been fairly quiet in between the last board meeting, but just update the board on a couple of things that pertain to the high school. Over break, we were, we got approval. We had made a ESAR request for environmental sensors, a large purchase of them, and about half of the purchase will be going to the high school here. Those alert us to anything from changes in temperature, changes in sound levels, but also various change, you held me here, Ricky, exactly what they, the environmental sensors, besides just sound and heat levels.
Fine particulate matter. Bait.
Bait. And so we found some success with, we've been testing one here at the high school quite successfully. So we're going to be looking to expand that mostly into restrooms at this time, because there's, we're, they're getting a lot of the bait, but also looking at possibly around the boilers and areas of that nature, because if something were to go in the middle of the night, we'd have that notification. The policy committee met over break to discuss, looking at a policy around the flag and the flags and flagpole. A draft has been circulated to the committee. We need to meet again, which won't probably be until next week, just the way the schedule looks. But then, once the committee has made a recommendation, it'll be posted for 10 days for public comment before it can be adopted by the board and by all boards. And then we began a conversation with some folks here within the SU, but also with some folks that we work with around just how do we foster a community discussion long-term, not around a symbol or anything of that nature, but just how do we heal our community and bring our community back together and do it in a manner that is productive, where everyone has a voice? And so we're kind of working out the details in that. We want to make sure we have the right people to run it and kind of be able to have the right protocols and whatnot, so that it's not, it allows for equity of voice. And then also, we pushed out using Thought Exchange, which is an online platform that we use to, for our vision statement for the SU, to kind of get some feedback, which has been great. We're looking to continue to use that, that tool to prompt discussion and get feedback from our community. About it.
Thank you, Andy. Principal's report. John Brody, please.
Okay, Molly, thank you. Short and sweet tonight as well. We've got an HVAC, the update on that M&amp;E engineering. Been working with Mike Sullivan, who we selected to do the job, and he's gonna meet here on Friday to begin what he called the kickoff meeting. And I'll continue to keep the board updated as we talk and move in that direction. SPAC testing, we've got tomorrow and Thursday. We're doing our state smarter balance assessment for the state. It's administered to ninth graders for math and ELA, and 11th graders, science. Tomorrow, we will be having ninth graders do ELA, and then on Thursday, they'll do math, and the 11th graders will also do their science. We have come to a, done what we call a three-hour delay schedule. The benefit of that is, instead of taking four days to do the testing, we can get it done in two, so it's less disruption to the kids' regular days. On Thursday, our Haver Advisory Committee is gonna meet for the second time, and we're gonna discuss the charitable donations 101, advised by Kathleen Brier as a way to manage our fund, and the who is doing what, where, and when. We'll also discuss the next steps to develop our science labs, and this would be good information for me to report back to our Haver representative. Again, for those of you who aren't up to date on it, we had, the Haver Foundation gave us a quarter of a million dollars to work for the school on four areas. One was the furtherance of online learning that reached the graduation. One was financial literacy. One was the development of science, and the other is the development of economics. So again, anyone who would like to be part of that committee, it's not, it's not a closed committee. We welcome open voice as well. So it's Thursday, we'll be here at 3 o'clock. If you have any aspirations to join us, please just give me a call, contact me, give me an email, and we'll get you on the list as well, because we love community support. AP exams, they're beginning next week, week of May 2nd, and they go to May 12th. Over that period of time, we'll have six classes of AP, or five, and our R program will be submitting their work to the board. Spring sports, they're underway, track and field, girls tennis, softball, and baseball. We've got almost 90 students participating in the spring in all sports, so very, very good turnout this year. Important dates I put on as well, our prom, which we have the committee meeting in the dining room right now, the cafeteria, is May 7th, and it's here in the high school. Class night is June 15th, and that's 7:00 PM here in the auditorium. And graduation is June 16th, and that'll be up on the football field at 6:30 PM. So that's pretty much all I've got, Molly. Pretty straightforward, no?
Thank you, John. Go ahead, Jason.
Mr. Brody had a question. Jason Terry for Rockingham. For the committee, for the Haver Committee, is it every Thursday, or will it be announced?
No, no, no. We're meeting approximately once a month, maybe every five weeks. I'm trying to keep it at that frequency so we don't get bogged down in meetings, but the first one's very good. This one, we've got a good agenda that's coming out for that, and then that'll drive what, what we can do next, and it will help me to recommend to the board what we might want to do in ways to...
Is there a chance that could be put on the, maybe the calendar, or just so, I'd like to attend. I can't do this Thursday, but...
Absolutely.
Unless you make it a different day. And then last question, if I may. Do we have the high school varsity girls basketball coach job posted?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check. Do you have it on there? I don't think so, but I can, we've advertised it to a few...
Well, we look for that. Is there any report from finance, or is that not till next meeting?
That'll be next meeting, yeah. Thank you.
We do have a new employee. Can you give me his name, the gentleman that'll be joining us?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I was looking for this and not paying attention. So James Vazina will be joining us officially on May 2nd as our business manager. And I think, just to give you an update, I'm, I've been really excited, because, I mean, Jim was in today, meeting with me. So, I mean, it's, he's, he's gonna hit the ground running, which I think is gonna be a real benefit for us. And the conversation I had today, you know, we were talking about the fact that we're gonna be in really good shape by the end of this year and going into next year, so financially the big blurps and headaches should not be an issue.
That's good to hear. So we've been lacking on having anyone bring their reports to our meeting, but it sounds like on our 23rd meeting, we will have some information, which would have a person in that.
Mr. Terry, the basketball girls' job is not advertised. I will make sure it's on tomorrow.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Well, I do.
Mr. Ha, on the report that came out today, earlier today, that was sent to us, the budget versus actual.
Yep.
Can we ask James to look into a few things?
Definitely. Do you want to email them to me, or, or...
Uh, there's a quick ones. On foreign language, I'm wondering why the travel expense was $1,122 compared to a budget of $500. The guidance department, there might be easy answers, but this looks weird. Tuition reimbursement was $3,390 compared to a budget of $600. The library, year-to-date expenses was $7,050 compared to a budget of zero. And the snowplow and sanding, so far this year, we spent $24,000, 24,616 compared to a budget of $15,000. Thanks.
Yep.
Does someone have an ESAR update?
We're all, we basically are in about the same as we were. We're just kind of proceeding. I don't think any more have been approved, but you can check with Andy.
Yeah, no, so the, what we were focusing on was ESAR 1, which, that grant goes away September of 20... I'm really lost.
22.
So 22, so it goes away in '22, and, and there's no more amendments allowed after, at the end of May. So we've been working to ensure that we, because sometimes you maybe put a little bit more into a line item than you are actually gonna spend, because you don't know what that actual expense is gonna be. So then you, once you've done the actual, you go back and find the little dollars and pull them together. That's why we were able to capture some money for the sensors. And then we're hoping we have one large order come in with some reading materials, we might be able to capture some more funds to be able to kind of spend those down. And ultimately, you just don't want to give money back, and the state really doesn't want to take it back, so we're trying to make sure we spend that and get those funds caught first, so.
Thank you. Does anyone on your screen have any questions on reports before we move on to resignations and appointments?
I don't see anyone on there.
Anyone on the floor have any more questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to resignations and appointments. Mr. Brody, hopefully you're gonna help me with this. We have retirees, resignations, and appointments, so let's do retirees first.
Well, retiree, we have Lori Walters, our math teacher, is retiring after 25 years of working this year. And, I think that's it this year for retirees. I still am not in, I don't have the presence of the two staff that are moving on. We're losing two staff. One is just moving.
John, can you turn your mic on? They can't hear you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, there we go. Is that better?
You might need to bring it forward to you a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, two, we have two, two resignations that I know are coming, but I don't physically have them at the moment. And that is, our language teacher is moving on, and our choral director, who is having to, to move out west for family reasons, which is sad, because we love him, and he doesn't really want to leave, but again, family always comes first. Appointments, I have two for the board tonight. We have a science teacher, Matthew Peister is coming to us as a brand-new teacher that I'd like to recommend that we hire. And we have Ally Grable, a math teacher, who is coming to, I wouldn't say replace Ms. Walters, but to fill that gap.
John, can you give me Ally's last name again, please?
Grable. G-R-A-B-E-L-L-E.
Do we need any action taken on the retiree? The retiree is Lauren Walters. I thought we'd already done that.
Yeah, you've already accepted. You've already accepted, yes.
Isn't Tina Madison also?
Tina Madison is also retiring, but we've already done that one also.
Done that one too.
Okay.
Sorry.
So the resignations, we can't do anything with until we actually have them in hand. Let's move to appointing Matthew Peister for a math teacher. Can you let us know where he is in this?
Matthew Peister is a science teacher, and he is coming in right at the beginning of step four, and he has a master's.
Can I have a motion to appoint Matthew Peister as a science teacher at step four, please?
I'll make that motion as, Margot, to appoint Matthew Peister for a science teacher at step four.
There's a motion on the floor, and does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brody on this appointment? Anyone on our screen?
I have a question, Molly. Which, which science position is that one? Which one are they doing?
Which science position is that one?
That is the science one that we've had open for two years now.
Is that the earth science teacher we haven't had for a while?
Yes, yes.
Earth science. Thank you.
Does this person have experience?
No, he's a brand-new teacher. He has experience in our building because he's doing student teaching here. So I think he will be, I believe he'll be very good.
Any questions on the screen?
I do not have any.
Thank you. We'd like to take a vote on accepting the appointment of Matthew Peister as a science teacher at step four. Pamela, how do you vote?
All right, yes, I'm muted.
Brenda?
It appeared that she voted yes, but Brenda, you were muted, so she's shaking her head yes. Thank you.
Deb?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
The motion has been made and approved to appoint Matthew Peister as a science teacher at step four. The next appointment is Ally Grabel.
Ally Grabel, yes.
And what is her?
For math. She is step nine and a master's. And she is applying it from Ms. Walters.
Does anyone on the screen have any questions for Mr. Brody on the math teacher?
I don't see any.
Ally Grabel.
No.
Anyone here? Priscilla?
Yes, would you ask?
We gotta use the microphone.
Would you ask him if he, it is the half-time hours and the half-time from the grant?
Is that a half-time hours and half-time grant?
No.
It's a full-time teacher?
Full-time teacher.
Thank you.
Because we had a half-time that was supposed to be grant-funded, they thought. And it was four and a half teachers that we were having outside of that.
But this one is a full-time teacher?
This one's a full-time teacher replacing Ms. Walters.
Ms. Walters was a full-time teacher. No grant involved in hers.
Yeah, but our budget call for four and a half plus half grant. So I was just wondering how we got to this point.
Well, with her, how many does it make?
With her, do we still have an opening? With Ally Grabel, do we still have a position that is half grant, half teacher?
No.
Do we have that in our list?
We have, yes.
And is that already filled?
Yes.
So that position is already filled.
Okay. So does this make five full-time that we're paying for?
Four and a half.
Or four and a half?
Four and a half.
Four and a half. Okay, this is just a full-time. Okay. One other one. Other one is up.
I kind of feel like a kid between mom and dad right now. Maybe we can get our mics turned on. Thank you. So right now, I have a motion on the floor to appoint Ally Grabel as a math teacher, step nine. Pamela, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
We have just appointed Ally Grabel as our new math teacher to step nine. Welcome aboard. We are down to unfinished old business for discussion. Pledge allegiance. I would like Jason Terry to speak to that, please.
Thank you, Molly.
Mr. Brody, if I could ask, do you happen to know when they stopped the pledge of allegiance here at the high school?
I don't. I've been here for 20 years and I don't remember in that time.
Is that something that if you chose to, you could implement of this? Reason why I'm asking is I found out recently that this school, and I believe Westminster, does not do the pledge, but all the other schools in this district do the pledge of allegiance in the morning. And I just am perplexed, I guess, on why it went away. I'd just like to know if that's something you'd consider bringing back without, you know, having to jump through a bunch of hoops. It seems pretty simple to me, but.
I'd be very unminded to it, but I think the first thing I'd like to do is talk to parents and survey parents and get the feeling of parents and what they, what they would like. And talk to kids as well, see what they would like. You know, instead of just doing it, get informed and get information.
Okay, if you could just let us know and follow up with that, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. The next thing we have on unfinished business is removing the banner above the school doors.
Took it down.
But I saw it was done today, so thank you very much.
Hopefully we'll get a new one to put up next year.
For anyone that doesn't know, we had a banner above our front doors that's been there since 2015. We were very proud of what it said, but it was looking a little raggy. So we've got it down and we'll try to get something up there that, you know, looks very, very nice and presentable. Thank you. Negotiations. Who's speaking for negotiations? Is that Priscilla?
I can. Is this on?
Yeah, I'll help you.
The negotiation committee met on last Thursday. Get my dates right. Thursday, and just as a preliminary, before we met, we'd be support staff, which we will be meeting with them on Wednesday night. We looked at possible ground rules and came up with a draft that we will present and discuss with them on Wednesday night.
First off, tell us what negotiations you are on.
Support staff. Just like the support staff. We're meeting with support staff on Wednesday night.
Hi, June Streeter. I know that there was a question brought up about whether or not Pamela had a conflict of interest. And I don't know if I ever heard or if it was found out we were supposed to ask counsel. Because Andy needs to have counsel support. Andy needs to enter that.
Just give me one second to pull that up, because I thought I had provided that to the board. I apologize.
Well, Andy is looking. Does anyone else have any questions or comments about negotiations?
I am on the negotiations for para-support staff as of right now, because that's.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you just announce who you are?
Oh, I'm Pamela Johnson Sperlock, the board member that was about in question about my conflict of interest. I'm on the para-support team. I have not attended a meeting yet because the first meeting sadly was this last spring break, and I had a conflict of interest.
Go ahead, Andy.
So our advice from our legal counsel is a conflict of interest exists where a board member has a direct or indirect financial stake in the outcome of an issue. Vermont NEA often uses comparable statements for the purposes of negotiating larger increases in wages. Therefore, it could be argued there is an indirect benefit to the board member/teacher. In my experience, teachers who are board members always decline to participate in negotiations or even in ratification of the contract. At a minimum, there is an appearance of a conflict.
I am fine in the future not being on the teacher negotiations, but I know, as David Clark pointed out, that he would be happy for me to be on the para-staff negotiations.
True statement.
Molly? Yes, but, but David also pointed out that it is a conflict of interest. And with the lawyer saying it's a conflict of interest, it puts the negotiation team in a bind as far as the members that are on it. So I don't know. I'm on there.
I'm happy to step down if so many people are against it. I just wanted to be part of it to help speak up on behalf of educators. But if, like, I should be, I am fine stepping down and letting someone else.
If you'd let me finish, what I was gonna say was when, the first night, I absolutely felt that, you know, it was a good thing for having somebody who's really interested to be on there. But if it's giving the appearance of it, as David pointed out to the whole community, and the lawyer has said that it is at least an indirect one, I don't know what to recommend.
Pamela, it's your turn.
Again, if so many people are opposed, I am willing to step down. I was just doing it to be a part and to help speak up for educators. But if so many people are questioning my ethics, they obviously do not know who I am. And that's fine. I am new here. I'm happy to step down. And someone else who is willing to take my place can take it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, David.
How do you turn this thing on?
There's a button on top.
Am I on?
You're on.
Wonderful. We have an opinion from legal counsel, and the opinion from legal counsel is just that, an opinion. I think the ultimate decision lies with this board. And perhaps this board should be considering whether or not this board believes Pamela Sperlock is conflicted by serving on negotiations. I did point that out. I did point out the fact that I supported her efforts and presence for support staff negotiations. And certainly, I think that a decision is, this is a board decision.
Thank you, David. I believe you're correct. I think that, the first question I have is, is there anyone else interested in being on the negotiations for support staff? Is that what we're looking for?
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone on your screen that's interested? We have Brenda and we have Deb.
I do not see either of them jumping up and down.
Deb is already on it.
Deb is already on it.
Okay, thank you. David, are you interested? Not at all. Thank you. Margaret?
Unfortunately, no, I'm not this time.
June, you're next.
Yes.
You're interested?
Yes.
All right. So we have someone that is interested in being, yes?
Deb Wright has it.
Deb Wright, go ahead.
I have a question. I'm not sure if you're aware, but I have COVID, attempting to stay here. I'm not sure how effective I'm gonna be tomorrow either, as I have to return, I have to turn up by Zoom. I can't come to the meeting. So if there are other interested parties, I would be happy to step down as well and be, and be replaced because I'm not very effective while I have COVID, I'm afraid.
Thank you. I hope you feel better. I think we have got June Streeter on the hook here. And Pamela, are you okay with June filling your spot?
I'm totally fine if she's willing to step up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave Deb on there, because I think Deb's had a lot of experience with it. And I'm sorry she doesn't feel good right now, but she is gonna get better. And I think that she could help a new board member like June with, with some ideas. So Deb, I appreciate it, but I'd like to keep you on there. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Molly. Will do.
Any other questions or comments for negotiations? How's my screen looking, Andy?
Looking empty. No, it's looking fine. No hands. That's what I meant.
Looks like we're clear here. Let's move on to review and approve policies. And Priscilla, I'm gonna put that on you.
Yes, these, the policies that are listed on here are, the policies that are listed on here have all been approved by the SU. I can tell you what each one of them is if you want, but I think all the policies were sent to the board members to look at. I can tell you what they are. I'm getting that out. B3 is alcohol in drug-free workplace.
We have already had.
Alcohol testing transportation employees before.
Priscilla?
Yeah.
We have already had these, right?
Not having. They were all sent to the board members, yes.
And they've already been through their first read, or is this the first read?
They, they've already been approved by both the SU, all of these have been, and.
They've already been posted for 10 days.
They've already been posted for their 10 days.
Okay, just one second. You can move back a little bit.
They were posted, the first, the three, four, the eight, C1, 3, 4, 5 were posted on February 13 and approved by the SU on February 23rd. The F1, 23, 24, 7, and 8 were approved by the SU board on April 4th.
Okay.
Posted 10 days before.
I think we got a couple of board members with some questions. The first thing I want to make clear is there is no flag policy in these names. So we are gonna read those names off of those policies before we vote on them. And June, what's your question?
On the code B3, the alcohol and drug-free workplace, I was curious as to whether or not you require random drug tests for all the employees at least once a year?
No, we don't.
We must on bus drivers, correct?
Bus drivers, because that is governed by the state.
Margaret, you got a question?
Oh, I did have a question regarding, even though these have been presented to and approved by several of the district boards of our district, do we as a board have to have them posted, do a first read, and then come back and do?
They're posted for 10 days, and so the community, and the community can also weigh in on any of that, and then they can be approved. And they have been posted since before April 4th, for 10 days before that.
So it doesn't have to be specifically posted for the high school?
No, they're posted on the website.
So I think what you're asking, Margaret, is, you know, have these been presented to us before tonight? And I believe they have. We had a lot going on for a couple of meetings when these should have been taking place. And so the policies got kind of bumped and they shouldn't have. But, so we have quite a pile of them tonight. Priscilla, if I could just ask you to please, oh, I'm sorry, I got two more people, Priscilla. I can't ask many. David?
If I understood the policy chair correctly, she has said that these policies have been warned for adoption by the supervisory union board. That does not, that does not suggest that they have been, at this point, warned for either first read or adoption by the union high school board. And the supervisory union cannot make policies that they adopt incumbent on us. We have our own unique responsibility for the adoption of policy. So I think we need to clarify whether those first reads and warnings strictly refer to the SU, which they appear to, to me, or whether this board has already acted at least as far as first read. I'm not aware it has, but it would hardly be the first time I've been wrong about something at this table.
Thank you, David. Was there someone on the screen, Andy?
Yeah, Deb Wright.
Go ahead, Deb.
Yes, I just wondered why C, F34 and C12 aren't on this list to start the process that Andy sent.
Do you want me to answer those questions, Molly?
So, I'm sorry, Deb, can you tell me which two of those are?
F34 is the flag policy, which has just been introduced by Andy to the board members. And C12, oh, shoot, I don't think I can remember which one that is. Back and look.
Yeah, but Andy says he'll take it for you.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
So those two policies, one is on Title IX, and the other one was on the flag. Those are the ones that I was referring to. They've been put out to the committee for comment, but they have not been, I put them out to all boards just because the flag policy was important, but also the Title IX is important. So, and the Title IX is very long, so I just want people to take the time to read it. But the committee has not made a recommendation as of yet to the boards. So that's why those two are omitted, Deb.
Thank you.
So, David, point well taken, because I guess I was trying to get to that. I don't know, is, we have actually done a first read on all of these at the high school level, and.
They've all been posted, Molly, and. They've all been posted Molly and they've been mentioned at previous meetings. So they only needed to go on the website and read them. So we've done, we've done well over 10 days. And some of these are needed for our grant funding and for some of those other things. So we, you know, they've been approved at the SU, they've approved at Rockingham except for the last ones and.
So I'm gonna ask the people that I can see first, are you, Margot, June, Jason, David, do you know enough about these? So you're ready to vote on these or do you need to be able to look at them one more time?
I have questions about all of them.
Okay.
I haven't read all the two of them.
I've been here a year and I don't remember getting these. I'm okay with the first read, then if you wanted to vote on the 23rd.
David, are you okay with the first read?
Well, I was gonna actually make a suggestion that we could, based on the policy chair's recommendation, warn them for adoption if the policy chair believes that these have already been through first read. If we were to get to the next meeting and discover that hadn't happened, I suppose we could amend the agenda and rewarn them for first read. That would be as an adjustment to the agenda, but you better get a parliamentary, parliamentarians' opinion on that.
Does anyone on our screen have any comments on this?
I don't see anyone.
Thank you.
I do, yeah. I agree.
Go ahead Deb.
Okay, I agree with David. I do not believe we have gone through the first read, second read, and we don't follow that process. We're just like cutting it short shrift. So we should do that despite the fact that the SU has already passed these. The fact is that high school has to agree and understand that we are doing this properly. That's what the procedure's for. And as David said, a parliamentarian is down below me a couple of steps and he might have something to say about it's not covered. Thanks.
Do you have more?
I, basically what Deb said. Thank you Deb.
Molly, if there's members of the board that are uncomfortable with going ahead and approving them tonight, they have been posted for, some of them have been posted since the middle of February and the second set has been posted since, in March. So I would suggest that board members read them for the next time because it's 10 days that they have to be posted and then we take a vote on that. That's the new procedures for adopting policies. So if they want to have them warned for the next time and make sure they've read over them this time. So if there's any questions, then they can ask the committee for any information, that would be fine. You're welcome to ask me for anything at any time.
I think that's what we need to do. It looks like we get a couple more comments. I'm gonna go to David.
I would just like a clarification whether the policy chair is suggesting a first read here or a warning for adoption. I've indicated my willingness to go either way in the belief that we could adjust the agenda at the next meeting if we need to do so.
June?
I just have a bunch of questions on some of these and I'm not going to adopt them or vote to enact them without my questions being answered.
Absolutely. Priscilla, what are you recommending for the next meeting?
I'm recommending that we put them on the agenda for the next meeting to be adopted at the next meeting instead of at this one. So you would approve the policies at the next meeting. So they've been posted, like I said, B3, 4, 8, C1, 3, 4, and 5 were posted February 13 and it must be.
That's okay.
6, March, I think, March 24th. Or the F1, 23, 24, C7, and 8. So as long as the board members just got them and are feeling uncomfortable, I would think that they would have time between now and, because it's 14 days at least till our next meeting. And then we can adopt them at that meeting if they're acceptable to the board or if not, the board can comment.
Andy?
If I could just ask, if there's board members who have questions, if I can be included, because some of them are statutory mandates. So the wording has to be worded specifically, but we can try and get the answers before next meeting, so we're not keep pushing. And as Priscilla pointed out, a few of them are required by the agency of education for our grants and we are being audited or monitored for our grants at the end of, at the end of, or early June. We have to start submitting things to them next month and if we miss our deadlines, we could miss our grants. So it's kind of, some of those are important. So if there's questions and I can expedite the answers, I'd be happy to.
So going off topic, but not really because from what you're talking about, it's important. I was pushing off denying a meeting until May 23rd. Do we need to have it on the second Monday?
For policies, yes. And Deb Wright has her hand up.
I got David Clark and then Deb Wright.
I'm addressing the chair here for the benefit of my junior Westminster colleague, presuming that the chair is the senior Westminster colleague. And that is that even if there is an item calling for a warning of a policy on the agenda, that does not mean that we can't make minor changes to language and if necessary, kick it back the policy and make larger changes. Warning it for adoption, presuming that the first read has been properly warned, does not mean that we have to take action on that policy at the next meeting. It means we can, if we're comfortable with it, take action and even make minor changes in order to take that action.
Yeah, Wright?
Okay, my comment, my comment is that on agendas, the process, the proper process does not seem to be written in on the agendas to make sure that we're following it. Are we calling this the first read and the next meeting, we will call it the second read and then approve the policies? I don't understand because it's not written that way. So we could, so all members could understand. We've read it once and we could even cite the date. And we've read it twice and we could cite the date. And then we're actually following the process. Posting is not reading. It's two different things. And we shouldn't consider that they've been posted since April 4th or whatever and that's not a reading. Posting them is not reading them. They must be read and accepted by the board. So yes, is this the first reading? That's what I'm asking. And that we follow procedures. So I am asking this of Molly. Are we following the procedure? And should we continue, make sure that on future agendas, we write, whether it is the second reading or the first reading and ready for adoption? Thank you.
So that is, hold on. I would like to know if something has changed in how we do policies. And Andy, maybe you can tell me that, but just how Deb just described to it is how I've always remembered it. As a board member and David's standing here doing the same thing I'm doing, is we had a first read, a second read, and we adopted it. And I don't recall that we've done that. It sounds like we've posted it. We've talked about some of these once, but I don't recall it being called a first read. Has something changed?
Molly, it has changed. We don't do a first read, a second read, and then adopt.
When?
We, it was, the state changed it and it's, since I have been doing this with, in chair, I was chair last year and I'm chair this year. Last year, it would, we went by, and on your policy, you will see, it says only date warned and date adopted. So you just have to have it posted, warned, posted for 10 days, and then you can adopt it. Yeah, that was, that was.
Is Jack Murray still on there? He gets right, he pretty well knows all this stuff.
Yeah.
He's standing up in his chair.
With everyone's permission, we have adopted a process over the last few years where items go before a joint policy committee. They're worked out, they're brought before the supervisory union board for warning and then adoption. Then there's, but since the SU is a collective, the final decision is made by the individual boards. The process has been, and it's not in our governing documents, but it's our process, has been that these go to the individual district boards for an up or down vote on the assumption that the majority of the reps have seen it. That's not the case for the high school board because you only have three reps and you're a nine-member, no, 10-member board. So I would suggest that bearing in mind that your, this really does need to be an up or down vote because consistency is important, that you go through your full process of a full read and then a full adoption. But I would discourage people from amending these because that's where the devil lives. And I would prefer that they be up or down votes. If they reject it, send it back to the policy committee if you have things that you want fixed, because there should be things that are fixed for all boards. So that's my recommendation and I hope that everyone can, can do that. And if we need to change our governing document around policies, let's bring that for the SU board and let's fix it and let's make sure that everybody's on the same page because it feels to me like you're not.
So Jack, my question was, do we not do a first and second read anymore?
I think you do a first and second reading for adoption because that, the language there is statutory and I think you just have to do it.
Not anymore.
We have, you've skipped that a few times, but if anybody's gonna question it, then I think you revert back to the statute.
The statute's been, the statute says 10 days and then adopt.
What statute please?
I will, I will get you the statute because I looked it up to make sure I was correct, but I don't have the number for it, but I will definitely get it for you Deb.
I'll defer to my word of number from, from Rockingham on this point, but I just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable and no one should ever feel like it's being jammed down anyone's throat.
Okay, so what happens if I do a first read right now? And we do a second read on the 5th of May and we do approval on the 23rd?
This is on your agenda. So you're doing, so this is up for that first read this evening. So you're.
Well, the way it was written was review and approve policies, but I don't think we're at the level of approving yet. I'm just looking for your guidance.
But I would say you read them and then warn them for adoption at your next meeting. You'd be perfectly within, that would be perfectly acceptable to anybody. So technically you're supposed to read the whole thing, but that's, nobody ever does that, but that's up to you.
Okay. June, you've got your hand up.
Can I ask my questions or are we going to read them all and then I ask them?
So I'm going to ask Priscilla to read off the number and the title of each one of these policies and then June, I would like you to be able to ask your questions.
Also Molly, if you will direct anyone who has questions about the procedures and stuff, if you direct them to the BS, where have they been answered? VSB@A website, there's a policy 101 webinar, which will give them the way we are doing it with the 10 days and then the warning.
Can you please send them the statute to all of us that we have it?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. B3 is alcohol and drug-free workplace. Sorry, I asked that question. B4 is drug and alcohol testing transportation employees.
Go ahead June.
Mr. Haas, when was the last time this was done and how often is it done? A year?
I'm sorry, transportation?
Yes.
It's done annually and it's done randomly. So we don't actually know. They notify us and it takes place then.
Okay.
B8 is electronic communications between employees and students. It was warned February 13th. C1 is education records. It was warned February 13th. C3 is transportation. It was February 13th. C7 is student attendance. I skipped C4, English learners. C4 is English learners.
Go ahead June.
Does this policy state that we are only going to teach kids using the English language? Because it's kind of confusing. It says, who is defined in meeting A, B, C below? And it talks about native language, Native American or Alaskan natives or native residents where English is not spoken. So.
What policy again? I'm sorry?
C4, English learners.
So C4 is a required by the state that we have this policy as written. And so the model policy is actually how, under statute and under federal and state statute needs to be written.
So do we teach everybody?
It has nothing to do with teaching of language. It has to do with those students who are English language learners and that we will support and promote them. So it has nothing to do with the teaching of English. It has to do with.
Right. Speaking.
It has to do with a student who is an English language learner and their right to access education.
But it doesn't say how we're going to.
That's in procedure. So a policy is, a policy says you will have a procedure.
Okay. I'm good then.
C3 is transportation. C5 firearms and weapons. C7 is student attendance. That was warned February 16th. C8 pupil privacy rights. That was February 16th. F1, travel reimbursement, February 16th. Capitalization of assets is F23. That was February 16th. You have a question on that?
Yeah, it has, it doesn't say WNESU. It just says, in order to provide the proper control and conservation of, comma, blank.
Swindon North East Supervisory Union and its members. Your copy doesn't have it all on there. I'm sorry.
That's why we first read.
I'm saying it didn't, okay? Number 3 is 5,000.
But this, I'm just telling you, I got this from the website.
Yeah, and we noticed that it wasn't at the SU meeting and we corrected it.
Okay.
But it hasn't been on there. Corrected, I'm sorry.
The one that was sent to the board members in email was updated.
Oh, okay.
Was that before me?
No, it was just sent.
I think you got one more, F24.
And F24 is prevention of conflict of interest and procurement and that's February. And F24 is prevention of conflict of interest and procurement and that's February 16th. I don't know, they were all sent.
We have heard what all of these policies are. Well, everyone will do a first read and we'll bring them back to the meeting on May 5th now to approve them. Does anyone else have any questions? Or better yet, if you have a question on a policy, if you'd send it to Priscilla and Andy, they would get you your answers.
We're going to move to new business for discussion.
Administrative review process. That is something that I put on there. I had a lot of questions after something happened at the last meeting and the, a person asked me who the administrative review board was and I said, you want to pry from that because we don't have such a thing. But the more I thought of it, I thought, you know, this is a business, even though we're a municipality, and we should have some sort of, at least, community members, business owners that, you know, maybe overlook everybody once in a while, maybe see what we're doing. Not maybe, we should, but this was the way it was, you know, this, when I got thinking about it, I go, why don't, you know, some of us work for really big companies and there's a lot of people with, in, on different boards and that aren't owners, that aren't managers, that aren't CFOs, they're, you know, they're a group of people that, you know, the owners probably have a lot of respect for and are, are own, are business people who just do that kind of stuff. I don't even know if that's something that happens in a school or municipality environment, but when I read the papers and I see all the stuff that goes on in towns and in school districts all over the place, I guess I'm just interested in at least looking into something like that just to kind of help us. No disrespect to our superintendent, I think he's put his best foot forward and is trying super hard, but look at how many times we've been in the paper for that. You know, how do we, you know, how do we get people in positions where we can, you know, help each other? We have a Haver grant that we have, probably 20 or 25 people involved and it's all different people. And it, you know, when you start going around that table, there's a lot of different opinions. There's a lot of things you've learned that you never knew. I never knew the science lab were a mess until I went to that first meeting. And I've been here for a long time, so it was, it was a good, I didn't like what I heard, but it was a good meeting because I learned something. I learned that we ought to be doing something a little different. So Andy, I don't know what that looks like and, but it's just something I'd like just to, just think about. How do we, you know, I look at these chairs and we've talked for 15 years now, these chairs aren't being replaced and it's always about money, but what is it really about? You know, we talk about, you know, something happened in the school or somebody doing something they shouldn't have done or, you know, how do we, how do we look at that kind of stuff? You know, we, I, just throwing that out there, but I really like, maybe somebody out in the public has got some suggestions on how to do such a thing, but I just wanted to throw it out there. Go ahead, Jason.
Molly, I'd like to ask if I could, I'd like to ask if I could, either Andy or John, do you, do you guys have a process to review teachers and staff currently? Is there like a yearly review?
Yeah.
Is that something that the board's bringing too or not?
So, I don't know if you want me to comment on everything at this point or...
No, Jason's fine. I threw a lot at you.
No, I mean, the board, so with all due respect, the SU board hires me, not the high school board. And the power given to the superintendent is the superintendent hires the administration and reviews the administration and the administration reviews the teachers. The board getting into micromanaging of teachers and reviews of teachers and reviews of administrators would be overstepping their bounds.
I just wanted to hear you say that, yes, you guys do have a review process to coach up possibly to improve performance of maybe an outlier who might not be doing, who may be doing a subpart job and that's all, because that happens in every industry. So like, I'm glad you guys do that, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's our responsibility to make the teacher better or to help them understand that maybe they need to look for a new profession.
So Andy, the point is, you just answered my question. You know, you, so you're telling me that you're in charge?
Don't know if I want to be, but...
I know, I'm loud enough.
Okay.
I'm just curious though, how constrained I think you're in with these teachers and with performance? Because I've seen teachers who clearly shouldn't be teaching and they're moving and, you know, they keep, they keep at it.
So the collective bargaining agreement does outline how an administrator has to address any disciplinary or performance issue. So without it in front of me, I wouldn't want to quote it, but the typical process is that an administrator might speak to a teacher, you might follow it up with an email, so it's documented, then you might follow that up with a formal sit-down conversation where the teacher would have representation if they wanted to. If discipline were to actually be an outcome, the member would have the rights to have a representative with them during that time. From performance, as a, as an administrator is doing evaluations, formal and informal evaluations, because both of those are done, you know, every time you walk through someone's classroom, as much as administrators try to tell teachers it's not an evaluation, it's an evaluation. And so those informal and formal evaluations go on and then it's each principal's, you know, responsibility to walk that through. I've been in, I've been in education for almost 30 years. Have I seen teachers who needed to be helped one way or the other? Yeah. Have I seen teachers who have passed, if you will call it that? Yeah. And that's where we need to tighten things up. And whether that's here or anywhere across the nation, we need to help teachers become better teachers.
So Andy, you answered my question, I'm glad I said it, even though it probably stung for a minute, it wasn't attacking you. It was, I think it's really good for people to hear what the chain of command is and how things are looked at, how things are rectified, you know, what kind of, you know, actions are taken when something goes the wrong way. So we know what the bull's eye is now. Thank you.
I have comments to add.
Yes.
I heard something much more practical in the chair's pitch, I'll call it. You were quick to defend on who you work for and the hierarchy as it stands now, but I think what I heard from the chair was, what would it hurt to have an advisory board in the public? Because after all, you do work for the taxpayers, no matter how you're treated. So what would it hurt to have counseling or opinions from the public in certain issues as a background?
May I respond?
Absolutely.
So I don't discourage any input from the public. In fact, the public has access to my calendar, can schedule a meeting with me at any time. That's been open since I've been in this position. I've taken meetings when I've been on vacation, I've taken meetings at any time and will sit down with a parent, I'll sit down with a school board member. It's, whether it's a Zoom meeting or an in-person meeting or a phone call, I've taken, I've talked to parents, I have a 45-minute drive, I've signaled for the last 15 minutes, so for 30 minutes, I talk to parents on the way home. So I don't have any concerns, I don't have a problem putting together some type of a, you know, a steering committee, if that's what the chair is talking about, I don't have that. I guess what I'm trying to say is that it needs to live at the SU level, not at the high school level. If there is a high school advisory, that would be oversight of the high school. So that's what's my purpose of my comment.
Yeah, and I don't believe it ought to be anything to do with the board. My, you know, my question from a community member was, you know, getting, just like June said, you know, people who are, I still believe, we're a municipality, we're a school, we're kind of educating our children, but when it comes to financing, when it comes to reprimanding, we're, we're business. And I think that's where that came from is, you know, how, you know, you know, if something's really going astray anywhere, you know, okay, you're the superintendent, but how much would it benefit you if you had four or five business people that met with you every six or eight weeks and you could sit down and say, you know, this happened and, or this is happening or look at this spreadsheet and, you know, everybody needs, everybody needs somebody they can look to.
I have no, as I say, I have no issue with that. It, the reason I was, I came across defensive was it was sounding like the board was looking for oversight.
Heck no, I got enough means.
But as I say, I have no problem sitting down with people. You know, I, around, around New Year's, I had a conversation with someone from the Rotary. It's just, to be very honest with you right now, doing three people's position, it's been hard to find an extra 10, you know, an extra hour to go to, go to another meeting. But I do believe that it's important and if we want to put together a group to sit down, I'm happy to do that.
Yes, Davis.
Hi, Molly. Am I on?
No.
Oh, good, okay. I can never tell. School boards have statutory authority to do basically two things. Creation of policy and oversight of finance. You get outside of that arena, we don't have authority. Now, what I want to say is that the notion of having steering committees or other entities of that sort isn't necessarily a bad idea. I also serve you on the River Valley Technical Center Board in Springfield and every single program has an advisory committee made up mostly of people within their industries, but not completely, who give the tech instructors advice and support. Earlier tonight, you heard Jack Ryer make a recommendation that boards consider the creation of what I still refer to as a community relations committee. And those committees meet very informally to have discussion about what's happening in school, what we think is great, what we think needs improvement, and you have what I would refer to as indirect feedback. There's another forum, and we're seeing it right here tonight, we've seen it for the last several times we've met, and that is when concerned citizens come into this room and give the board their wise counsel directly. And in some cases, we heed your advice, in some cases, we modify your advice and adopt it, and in some cases, we ignore it completely. And when that happens, you have a political resource, which is what we're up for election, is to remove us from office. I am extremely sympathetic to what Andy Haas has to say here about the fact that he's needing and committing to death. I agree with the chair that we need to be cognizant of the fact that if we're going to spend our taxpayers' money wisely, one of the ways that we achieve that is by keeping the workloads of our administrators manageable. Otherwise, we need more administrators and that costs more money. So I think, you know, what we're seeing here tonight, quite frankly, is the ideal form of advisory committee. And it's great that people come out and sit in the room and are willing to put their face on the camera to back up what they believe in, but I also think that maybe Jack Ryer's right, it is time to get back to, you know, more informal discussion of what happens in school and what we like and what we need to improve. So it's a great, great question the chair brought up. I favor giving Andy more time and less work like this. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. So Andy, just, you know, I just wanted to get that out there, it's not, and by all means, I wasn't looking for the board to do this, but I do think that there's probably, if we asked around some people in the community that, you know, maybe don't have the time to do what we do because it takes some time, but, you know, maybe it's a half a dozen people that come and have coffee with you once every six weeks and, you know, you're able to just, you know, talk things out a little bit. And it just, you know, maybe there's nobody out there who wants to do that, but I bet there is. So I just wanted to be very open-minded to what we're trying to do here and not push people away, not that we are, but, you know, get something going.
And also, we've had recovery team meetings going since last year and committee met, since I became superintendent, we posted that and asked for community to be involved in it. And unfortunately, we just haven't had a lot of community involved in that piece. With our latest one, with our vision statement, and again, it's a way to try and engage people is using, you know, the media and email, we sent it out to 3,500 people and we, because we push students, we're up to about 290 people replying. And so we need community engagement. And so if having, you know, a sit-down coffee with the superintendent kind of thing is going to engage more people, I'm all for it.
Good, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? I've been on the screen, what the screen look like?
Screen is not looking practical.
All fell asleep? Okay, so let's move on to clerk pay and I would like June Streeter to speak to that, please.
Yes, our, our recording clerk has been getting $75 a meeting for, she figured 10 to 15 years she's been doing this, which is a very important job. It's time-consuming, she has to re-watch the meetings several times and I would like to give her a little bit of a raise.
So what I'm hearing is June Streeter would like to make a motion to increase the clerk pay to the recording clerk at, at least $100 a meeting. To $100 a meeting. Is there any discussion? Anything on the screen?
Deb Wright has her hand up.
Go ahead, Deb.
Is this the recording, who is the recording clerk?
Tara Darrell.
Tara Darrell.
And this is for the recording clerk for the high school?
Yes.
That is correct, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so that means when we meet once or twice a month, that's, that's the stipend they're, they're paid, yes? $75?
That's correct.
And does the clerk, the clerk, this clerk does the minutes, yes?
That's correct. That's correct.
Just, just so, I don't know, sorry. Um, so the board just as informed, it would, if the board met twice a month over the course of a whole year, you're talking about three hundred dollars increase.
That'd be six hundred, wouldn't it?
Oh yeah, it's only once a month, sorry. Yeah, six hundred. Plus any extra meetings you did, so.
That's twelve months.
Vote must be twelve.
Any other questions or comment?
Thank you.
There is a motion on the floor to pay the clerk for the Bellas Falls Union High School a hundred dollars per meeting that she takes the minutes for. And I would like to make a roll call and start with Pamela.
Uh, yes. She deserves it.
Brenda?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Priscilla?
I'm trying to figure out how many, how much it, it is before I vote.
She gets paid seventy-five dollars a meeting right now. We have a motion on the floor to turn it to a hundred.
It would be twenty-four meetings in a year.
If we have two meetings a month, it would be a-
One-four-hundred dollars.
It's only twenty-five dollars extra, so it'd be fifty dollars a month extra if we have two meetings. So twelve times fifty is six hundred.
That's twenty-four-hundred dollars in a year.
Total, yes.
If we need.
Would you like to vote, Priscilla?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
The motion has been made and passed to pay our clerk a hundred dollars per meeting. Thank you.
I, I, I'm sure. I, I assume that means going forward, or?
Going forward, going forward. New business. Item C is masking. What will be done in the future? And that is all Jason Terry.
Thank you, Molly. Um, my concern is that next year, when COVID comes rolling back around in the fall, we're just going to do the same that we did this year. And my experience and what I saw is, it really wasn't very effective how people were wearing a mask. I mean, they, they have this study out now, and I'm no doctor, no nurse, just a normal, everyday dad. So you're supposed to change your mask. The mask that the kids were wearing, you're supposed to change it every twenty minutes or something like that. And there's different levels of masking. So what's the point of even having one on when you make your kid wear all day the same old ratty mask all day long? It's not effective. It was not effective last year in the numbers. It didn't help the numbers. Um, so I just, I don't want to see us repeat same mistakes. And, you know, there's a lot of people that have the feeling of, okay, it's springtime, COVID disappears, and in the wintertime, COVID comes back. So, you know, again, I'm no doctor, I'm no scientist. I'm just seeing, just saying what I see. And, um, it doesn't make sense, and I don't want to do, again, something that doesn't make sense. I watched a whole, I watched two years of kids playing basketball, uh, that are masked, both boys and girls. And we did a great job. You're asking kids to wear a mask, and, you know, a lot of times, they, you can't breathe. And thank God, all of those players are in phenomenal shape. You know, we canceled football two years ago, and it was a seven-on-seven joke. And this year, we had, you know, real football. Um, and so at what point are we going to stop taking away from the kids? So I'm not for, if it comes back again next year and we just follow, um, wha-, what they recommend, I, I want to be able to say no, uh, as a board. That's all. Thank you.
So there's no action being taken on this? I think that was, you know, Jason really just wanted to get that out in the open. Is there anyone who would like to speak to it before I move on?
How's Rich Green look?
Not at it.
Good. Thank you, Jason. We're going to move on to the, excuse me, the Athens Board Representative. We have two people here that are, have shown interest in joining the Bellas Falls Union High School School Board. We've had an opening in Athens for a while. Um, I would like to ask Tim Stevenson to, um, tell us a little bit about himself, and then we're going to move on to Pam Ingraham.
I don't need the mic.
Oh, they're in the camera. They gotta be able to hear you.
Oh, okay. So, um, I originally stepped forward for this position when I learned that it had not been filled in my town. Um, and I've had interest, uh, because I've been involved with, uh, Barrow Union High School as a special education therapist. Uh, I've gotten, I was very interested in what has been happening to boards, uh, throughout the land over the last six months or so. Um, and even now, it's crept into our own state in towns like Ludland and Bill Ri-, uh, Bill River. But in light of the fact that I learned tonight in walking into this room with Molly, that there is another person who is interested, um, I don't wish to compete with a neighbor in my town. So I'm going to step aside and let that person, um, speak for herself or himself, whoever it may be, and thank the board for letting me sit here and listen to your opinion.
Hi, I'm, uh, I'm Tanya Noyes, and I'm here to represent Athens. Um, just a little about me. Um, I have lived in Athens my entire life. I have been, um, went to middle school, Bellas Falls. I'm a graduate here. I have, um, a husband of twenty-five years, um, adult children, and a grandbaby. So, um, they're all residing in Athens right now. So, um, I do have, um, I just, I want to be able to do, um, community, um, work. Um, and I just thought it would be great. I didn't know that Athens had a seat open until recently. Great opportunity to start, um, doing something, um, in my, in my town to represent, so here I am.
Does anyone have any questions for Tanya? I would like to have a motion to have Tanya Noyes as our Athens representative.
I'll make that motion, Molly, to have Tanya Noyes represent Athens as our Bellas Falls Union High School Board member.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Anything on the screen?
I don't see anything. I see panels.
Um, Pamela, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brenda?
Uh, we lost her.
How about Deb?
Aye.
David?
At stake.
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Tanya, welcome aboard. There'll be some paperwork you'll have to do at your town hall and then get it to the SU, so that the next meeting, you can vote us. Thank you very much. We have, we have an executive session about a con-, contract matter, but I, it's okay with everybody. I'd like to go through director's comments first. Uh, there's no action being taken after executive session that I'm aware of, and then people that are here could go home if they wanted to. Does anybody have any problems with that? Anybody on the screen? All right, David?
Thank you, Molly. I'm going to stay out of director's comments, but I guess I'm not. Um, I abstain for two reasons. First reason is that I believe that, um, a decision about appointing a rep from a town to Union High School Board really should be made within that town. Um, and I was initially appointed to this board by the Westminster Select Board. Um, however, statute has changed. Um, and since statute has changed, that brings me to my second strong belief, which is that if we're going to take substantive action at this board, and certainly appointing a member, in my, um, opinion would be substantive action, I think it should be warned well in advance so that the public is aware of it and has the opportunity to come before this board and comment on it. Um, I think this was a good, uh, good appointment, so I appreciate the fact that you're on it. Now, um, I'm just all kind of processed on this one.
Pamela?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Deb Wright? Like we might have lost Deb. Hope you feel better. Do we have Brenda?
We lost Brenda.
Lost Brenda. Jason?
I have nothing. Thank you, Molly.
June?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Priscilla?
Now, sorry, just say that, welcome to, um, Tanya, and, um, as I say at each meeting, please remember to be kind and considerate of your neighbors, your community, students, faculty, staff, and your board members. Thank you.
Margot?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Tanya, welcome aboard. Thank you for joining us. And we're going to go into executive session. Thank you very much for the community that's here.
So do we?
Are we going to pick one?
We can't vote.
Oh, I gotta take people with me, so hang on.
Um, do we have to say who, do we have to make a motion to go into-
You do have to make a question.
And who we're going to invite?
Hang on, I gotta, you can go ahead and do that.
Go ahead, June, with your motion to go to executive session, and who are you inviting?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, and I would like to invite Mr. Brody.
Our new member was also, should also have been invited, because she is a member now. She can't vote, but she's a member.
So we have a motion to go to executive session. Our contract don't matter, and we're inviting just Mr. Brody or Mr. Haas also?
Yeah, just Mr. Brody.
Yes, Mr. Brody.